Good evening, welcome to the Mill Creek Planning Commission Building and the monthly Planning Commission meeting. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting of June 6, 2023 to order. Please rise and join us to the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, hello? Yeah. Please be sure and sign in at the attendance sheet located near the rear door. I would like to now introduce the members of the Planning Commission and our support staff. To my left is Ray Reed, to my right Tony Sitter, Dave Scully, and Denise Bizarro. Behind me is Jennifer Herniason, the Township Council, and Matt Puzz, zoning and development officer. Before I begin, I would like to call for motion to accept the minutes of last once meeting as written.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? So moved. The Mill Creek Planning Commission is a recommending body that hears testimony and asks and answers questions, deliberates, and passes our recommendation on to the Mill Creek Supervisors who make the final decisions. The subdivision or land development and request for planning waivers and non-building declarations discussed tonight, if acted on by the Planning Commission, will be considered by the Township. Supervisors at the regular meeting will be held on Tuesday, June 27, at 5:00 PM in the Township Assembly Room. In order for a smooth flow of information and not having a meeting run unnecessarily long, I would ask that everyone wishing to speak either for or against an issue to come to the podium, state your name, address for the record. I may also say that if a point has been made by a speaker, there is no reason for others to share the same viewpoint. It is not necessary for all to recognize and speak as the Commission will consider all testimony. Subdivision and Land Development Plan. The first one in order is a subdivision plan for Deets and Martin Property, a small subdivision plan to show the creation of 2.464 acres, parcel C from tax parcel 151-641-1, creating a 24.281 acre residual lot along the east line of Henderson Road, south of the railroad tracks in track 338. Oh, okay. Oh, it is. Okay.
Good evening, Mike Sanford, 4721 Atlantic Avenue, and I'm the surveyor that prepared the plan. Landowner is here as well, if you have questions for them. But it's a pretty straightforward subdivision. They own a U-shaped piece of property, has two different places of frontage on Henderson Road. They'd like to subdivide the northern portion off and create a standalone lot. So essentially, this is a one-lot subdivision. There are two modifications required. Due to the limited frontage of this northern piece that we're subdividing, we would need a frontage modification, and then also it would be the width-to-depth ratio on the same northerly lot that's being created. Later on your agenda, we can talk about the non-building waiver for the residue.
Any questions? No. Any comments?
Got it covered. Okay, I'll hang right here.
Okay.
I'll hang, if I could stay for the next one.
Yes. Number B, a subdivision plan for Robertson Enterprises, a small subdivision plan, a subdivision plan to show the creation of .775 acres, Lot A, from tax parcel 35-171-17, with a residual lot of .437 acres. This is a .437 acre parcel is to become an integral part of 1224 Idaho Avenue, which is 35-171-22, creating a .608 acre lot along the south line of West 12th Street, west of Idaho Avenue in track 13.
Thank you, Mike Sanford, again, 4721 Atlantic Avenue. And this is essentially what we would say is a rear lot subdivision. The homeowner on Idaho would like to acquire some more rear yard, and so the Robertson Enterprises is willing to subdivide, so the southern portion of the land would become integral with their rear yard, and then the northern portion would just remain as residue. As far as I know, there's no modifications or variances on this particular item.
Any questions?
No questions.
Any comments? Okay, let's move on to the next one. A land development plan for Dick's House of Sport, a land development plan to show the construction of a 20,655 square foot outdoor track and field facility located at the south portion of the Mill Creek Mall, tax parcel 33-164-667, along the west line of Peach Street, south of Kuntz Road in track 347.
Good late afternoon, Michael Tackus with Ole Engineering. One Allegheny Square, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, 5212. This project, this is a redevelopment at the Mill Creek Mall. This is, you can see the map up there, I'll show you on this map. As you probably are aware, the Bonetton, former Bonetton Department Store is being redeveloped as a Dick's Sporting Goods. So the location here is this box right here, but you can see that obviously on the enlargement, I'm sorry again. One thing I do want to clarify, we made the application as a Dick's House of Sport, it actually is a Dick's Sporting Goods. This is a new concept for them. This is a one-level Dick's Sporting Goods inside the Bonetton, and then it will have an exterior 20,000 square foot field area with a turf field area and then a running track surface around the outside perimeter of that. The new concept is, previously, the only stores that, or the only sites that got the field were their House of Sport, which is a much larger 100,000 to 120,000 square foot facility, two levels. There are currently three of them, if I'm not mistaken. I do have a couple people here, Brian Thomas with Dick's Sporting Goods, and Justin Somerville from Kafaro, who's the mall property owner. These larger locations, again, were much bigger in square footage. This new concept, which this will be the first, is a smaller, one-level store, but still gets the outdoor field. So the field is exactly the same between the House of Sport and this new facility. Just to give you a little more background, so this is the site, this is the area of disturbance, this is the outside edge of the store here, this is the area that is going to be impacted by the institution of the field. Right now, that inner ring road kind of goes up here along that outside edge. Our proposed plan redirects that inner ring road out and around the facility. Here you can see, this is the track area, this entire center is the turf surface, again, artificial turf, stone underneath with drainage that goes in, so it really helps, water can be absorbed into the subgrade, but it's also cleaned through that stone as well. So it's taking all that impervious and actually putting it into a much more greener condition. This area is surrounded by an enclosure area, it's very large steel posts, and then has a wire mesh screen that goes around the outside. We'll get through this and then we'll talk about that a little bit more. In addition to that kind of summer outdoor activity, it's also set up to have an outdoor ice rink in the winter months. So there is a, there will be a portable chiller that is located up on this side, and then it will be an ice rink in the winter months. There are lights, exterior lighting, stadium-style lighting, seating, this is just a rendering show of whether there are grandstands here, lights, there's a scoreboard. It's really to kind of give a miniaturized feel of an outdoor track facility and field facility. And you have some images. This is of the Victor New York, I believe this was the first of the outdoor facilities, again, House of Sport, but from a field standpoint, this will be what it looks like. You can see the running track, you can see the turf inside, scoreboard, and then you can see the enclosure here. The purpose of, obviously, the enclosure is to keep all of the activity inside instead of going outside to the parking facility. Here you can see the ice rink. Then in addition to, this is Knoxville, Tennessee, this is then looking from the outside, you can again see this enclosure. And the last, the last one is Minnetonka, Minnesota. So again, you can kind of see that they're all a little different, just as far as their configurations, but they're all, they're having the same elements that are located inside. So the one thing that we wanted to make sure we pointed out, it was determined that the enclosure was to be treated as a fence, and by the code, it only allows a maximum of eight feet of height. This enclosure is right around 30 feet, and it will match up with the building itself. So we are going after a zoning variance for this. I think, personally, I think that it doesn't fit a category, it's very similar to what you would have at a tennis facility that would have a high fence to enclose the actual activity, same as what the high school has for their baseball field where they have a backstop that exceeds the eight feet, screens along the side. All of those things are sports-related, activity-related, not really traditional fence as the way the ordinance defines it. So we feel very confident that we have a good case to be made for this, and of course, we'll be at the zoning hearing board at the end of the month, so. Open for any questions that you may have.
I have a question, what, how is the size of the Erie facility compared to the track size of the Victor facility?
Actually, this one, I believe, is 20,000 square. It's 20,000.
Yep.
Right, been there. I've been there already. I think we get a little extra square footage because of that configuration. I think they're kind of more rectangular, we've got that extra bump out that goes along that side, but it gives more usable square footage, so.
A good idea by the ice rink.
Great.
And your name?
Brian, sorry. Any other questions?
We had two things, but the staff had mentioned the square footage of the, I guess the Bonetton building, existing building isn't shown?
It's not, we'll provide that.
Okay, and the location, distance, and nearest fire hydrant?
We'll provide that as well, yep.
Two small things, that's all?
Yep. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Any comments? Okay, let's move on to the last one here, which is a planning waiver and non-building declaration. The applicant is requesting a planning waiver and a non-building declaration for their subdivision plan on the east line of Henderson Road, south of the railroad tracks, index 913-086.
Mike Sanford, 4721 Atlantic. Essentially, the subdivision you reviewed earlier, the residue parcel, the larger parcel, has not approved for septic system. So County Health and County Planning recommend this form, we put it right on the plan, as a notification to any potential buyer that the property is not a buildable lot until such time as public source available, or it does pass septic. So it's really a form used by the planning agencies to notify prospective buyers.
Any questions? Any comments? At this time, we're going to close the meeting and vote on the items. I don't think we need a break. You? Okay. All right. The first item, a subdivision plan for Deets and Martin Property.
I would recommend approval of the proposed plan, subject to the two modifications, one for the length by width requirement, and the other by the front footage requirement, not being 100 feet.
I would second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, move on to the second one. A subdivision plan for Robinson Enterprises.
Motion for approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is approved. Land Development Plan for Dick's House of Sports.
Motion for approval with the, in more particulars, the square footage of the existing Bonetton building being noted, and the distance from the nearest fire hydrant.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. And finally, the Deets and Martin Property, planning waiver?
Motion to approve.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Do we have any communications?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Committee report?
I'm sorry?
Committee report?
I don't have any, anything additional.
Progress still on the saldo?
Yes, there is, we are making progress on the saldo.
Okay. Make a motion to adjourn? Yep?
Chief Strohmeier, I'm here, but he didn't invite me to have a speech, but I didn't know about. Ask it with the Planning Commission, never asked them about it. You would think that they would at least have the courtesy to do that, and I think they were surprised about that too, which is what they said. I, it's my feeling that if they had discussed it with the Planning Commission, they wouldn't be going forward and doing it, because I feel that it's absolutely foolish, it really is. So I have prepared some documents that I would like to give you to take with you and possibly look at, and then if you want to comment, you can give me a call. Excuse the typing, because I broke my hand and arm, and I was supposed to come last month, but I couldn't come because I'm still, I couldn't type, and I'm still having problems with the nerves in my hand and arm, so you're going to find typos in here, and I can't correct them, I'm sorry.
Nothing to do with your dog ate your homework?
No, no, I just, you know, no, it has to do with a grandkid and a soccer ball. But anyway, so I'd like to pan these out to you, and I'll get one to Gene, who else is not here tonight?
Quite a few, Scott Stewart, Doug Prozan, Gene Strohmeier, Dave Fugate, so, one, two, three, four are not here.
I'll get from you how to get those to them, how's that sound?
If you give them to me, I'll make sure that I forward them to the board for you.
Okay, all right, thanks. Okay, that's all.
And you just wanted us to review these and?
I did, I had discussed them with Gene, who told me I could make a presentation on them, but I don't want to take up a lot of your time. I would rather give you these things and have you look at them, and actually, I will say this, I would really like, after studying these things, I would like, I know that you're not a body that can, that can take official action, you're a recommending body, but I was actually hoping, seeing how bizarre this whole thing is, because I know there are some very prominent commercial realtors who are very disturbed about this and very much against it, that the Planning Commission would decide that maybe they'd like to make a statement about it, that they're concerned about it, that would be good, because if they would like to do that, then I could also get these commercial realtors to come forward, and many of them haven't spoke publicly about this, that they are very concerned about it. And I think, at this point in time, when you read my synopsis and how much money the Township is losing on this, your opinion might be the same as mine, that I think the best interest of the taxpayers is served by stopping, not buying the properties that they haven't purchased yet, and then taking the properties they have purchased, doing what should have been done in the first place. Those properties should have been put on the market by commercial realtors and let the private market forces take care of things. I'm sure they would have been sold, I'm sure they would have been redeveloped without the use of public money, and that never took place, because when you look at Joe Roots building and the Grasshopper, those never came on the market. All that was done with Joe Roots was Baldwin's had it listed for lease, well, nobody who knows anything about real estate believes that someone's going to lease something in that condition. So that to me, that to me is not a legitimate attempt to sell a property. Grasshopper, the same thing, that was never for sale. Judge Braybender, if you will recall, had a hearing about the Bel Air property, and at that hearing, he granted permission to appoint the receiver, and the receiver was to close the place in orderly fashion and put it on the market. Well, that never happened, and I think, and one of the prominent commercial realtors told me, it did not come on the market, he actually had a buyer for it that he was working with, he was waiting to see what would happen, but my opinion is, and I don't know if it's true, I think the Township went behind the back of everybody and cut a deal with the bank that owned it. So private market forces never came into play, which would have been the proper thing to do. The same with the Manor Motel, it was never put on the market, so how do you know that, why did you have to use our money, our Water Authority rainy day fund, why did you have to use that to do this? You didn't. Private market would have taken care of it, just like they did the West Erie Plaza, and they took care of that. And then the last thing is the Sandbar, and you'll see in here, the Sandbar building was for sale for a couple years, and it didn't sell. So if, so if it had been appraised and priced properly, well, it would have sold, but it wasn't. Let the market take care of it. And what the Township is paying for it is just what they wanted when it wouldn't sell, so you're using public money to pay what the private market wouldn't pay, because when you deduct the fact that the goodwill and the equipment and the liquor license are things that the Township is not getting in the sale, they're getting exactly what they wanted on the private market that the private market would not pay them. So you have no business taking our money and giving it to them when it wouldn't even sell for that. You can tell I'm really angry about this, and I'll tell you what, every place my husband and I go, people come up to us that know us and say they are just angry. Lawyers, doctors, regular residents, they think this is just totally ridiculous. Don't be thinking, just because things are quiet, that people aren't angry, because they are. They're angry about the lack of transparency, and it was just snuck under the radar, done very quietly. When I was in office, I would have been hung out to dry if I did something like that. I've never known a Board of Supervisors that would do something like that, and this does not include Jim Bach, because he didn't, he voted against it. Something of this magnitude, something taking the whole Township's rainy day fund and doing, that should have been the subject of public hearings, they should have announced they were thinking about doing it, then you would have known about it too, and you could have weighed in on it. Instead, they just slid it right under the radar, and it's totally, totally the wrong thing to do. That lack of transparency just shocks me. I said I haven't even seen city politicians do something that bad, and that's saying a lot. It really is. I haven't seen anything like that even in the city, and it's really wrong.
Don't pick on the city.
No, and I have a lot of friends that have been on city council, and they are good people, and they are good people, but we've seen some real odd things happen in the city. And lastly, let me say this, and I put this in here, I'm on the Land Bank Board, but I got on the Land Bank Board after the Land Bank voted to give a million dollars for demolition of these properties. That is a sin. There isn't one of these properties that will qualify under the Land Bank's rules and regulations to be demolished. The Land Bank, as you know, the County Land Bank gives money to the City Land Bank, that's the only place they have to get money from, and they sent a representative to our meetings, and at the last meeting, I asked the representative, how many properties do you have in the city that need demolished and you don't have the money for, and he said almost 300. Do you know how that affects the quality of life for people in the city if that's in your neighborhood, and how it affects the value of your house? So here we are, Mill Creek, taking a million dollars from the County Land Bank to demolish things that don't need demolished, when those poor people in the city, the City Land Bank needs that money, and I think that's really wrong. If I had been on the Land Bank then, I definitely would have voted against it. And I'm just going to stop now, because I want to take up your evening, but I've gone over some of that stuff in here, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to say.
Matt, how many properties are left to purchase? Two?
That I don't know.
Okay.
Well, that's another thing, okay?
Is it just the last two, the Sandbar and?
Right, and this was told to me.
They're both done?
Well, they didn't close.
They will close.
Yes, but here's another problem, and let me just add this. You know I'm a real estate agent, have been for many years, and I understand commercial real estate too, because my husband and I were involved in it through the Erie Sports Store. And you never, if you had a home inspection and it revealed $25,000 worth of problems, you know what you'd do? You'd say to the seller, well, I want a $25,000 price reduction, or I want things rectified, or I'm walking from this. As far as I know, the Manor Motel, you may know the answer to this, they discovered asbestos and gas well problems, is that correct? That's what I under, that's what was told to me, to the $225,000 worth of problems. Did the Authority, which is also the Township, which is a horrible conflict of interest, did they ever go to the owner of the Manor Motel and say, look, I want a $25,000 price reduction on this, especially because we're working with public money? Bet you they didn't. Bet you they're still paying full price, because what do they care? It's our money, and I'm very offended by that too. I think that is way out of line. No, those two have not closed yet, they haven't. And my opinion is, you take what you, you cancel those sales, you take what you bought, and you'll see my analysis in here, and you put them on the market like they should have been with a good commercial realtor, and you paid too much for them with our money. So you'll take a little bit of a beating, but you won't lose anywhere near what you're going to lose by completing those purchases and demolishing those properties and sitting there with empty lots. And by the way, the Tax Assessment Board of Appeals just had a hearing on whether Mill Creek is now the Authority, that is Mill Creek, that's where they got their money from, going to be taxed, those properties are going to be taxable. And the school district went to those, went to that hearing, and they argued for the Township, aka the Authority, to be taxable, because they have now taken all those properties off the tax rolls if they're declared tax exempt. Do you know how much school tax yearly our school district is losing because of that?
Do you have the number?
How much, it's over $100,000, we figured it out, a year. The Township is losing.
All of them. Yeah.
Right, the Township is losing tax money, the County is losing tax money, and again, if you left them with the people that had them and let them get a commercial realtor to sell them, they'd still be paying those taxes. Now you're out those taxes, and what really, what happened that really surprised me is, Tom Smith, everybody knows Tom Smith, he spoke up against this at a meeting, he's a very prominent appraiser, said, if the Township is using the buildings, then they could be declared tax exempt. So what did they go and do? All of a sudden, they announced that they're using the buildings to let the Mill Creek Police and the firefighters use them for drills, use them for drills. Well, you know what, they don't need them, because the Land Bank has been letting them use our buildings before they're demolished for the same purposes. They did that on purpose, just so that they would be declared tax exempt. And if that isn't sneaky, I don't know what is. It just, the whole thing just smacks of, and I'll tell you what, to form an authority, the Board of Supervisors- And I'll tell you what, to form an authority, the board of supervisors, where three of you are on it, too, so that you're not safeguarding the taxpayers from, about any of the decisions of that authority because you are it and it doesn't have any money, then you're taking our money and giving it to yourself is just terrible. I'm sorry. I can't say enough bad about this, and neither can other people. But I'm hoping, thank you for the opportunity, that you, that you will look at this and that you will weigh in on it.
Thank you.
I agree with you completely on the land bank.
Thank you. The rest of them, I'll hand to Matt if you want me to.
I'll, I'll.
Okay, right. Give me that. Thank you, Sue.
You know, there is one thing I was wondering if the planning commission might want to consider the old schoolhouse, the Grasshopper.
Yes.
Pass a resolution in support of urging the authority to incorporate that into the design of any new development, if at all possible. Would that be something the commission would be interested in voting on?
Well, depending on how far this runs and how it does go, to put any developer, to push any developer to include that would be very hard because that land would have to be vacant to possibly attract anybody. And you're putting that type of restriction.
Well, it's not an absolute. It's an encouragement.
An encouragement would be great.
To encourage them to try to incorporate that historic building into a new development, if at all possible.
Yeah. Let's digest.
Which would be my motion if anybody wants to second that.
Dave, that's not on the agenda. You mean at a future meeting, you would vote on that, maybe review what Sue provided?
It has to be on the agenda to make a motion, I think.
Right, to be noticed to the public, yes.
Well, let's digest what Sue gave us here, and we could bring it up. Explain this to me again.
So to have it?
A motion.
Right.
You have to have it on the agenda.
Right.
Your show.
Well, yeah.
Well, yeah, you need public comment.
Are you sure?
Yeah, we didn't provide any notice, but, but I mean, you could certainly do it for next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.